Everybody, welcome. This time I'll call it Tuesday, August 29th, 23. Work session of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order, and I'll ask Commissioner Louis Weatherspoon to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for the many blessings that you've given us individually and as a county. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over Harnett County as well as the state of North Carolina. Lord, be with us, and as we go through this meeting, may everything that we do be in accordance with your will and pleasing to you. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, before we get started, item three on the agenda, update to the comprehensive land use plan. The administration has pulled this item and has rescheduled this to September 26 work session. So we move on to item number four, discuss a request for approval of the 620 ARPA COVID-19 health team workforce funding. Mr. John Rouse. Good morning, sir.
We, I came to you earlier this summer with, we got some more ARPA money. This is the money that the schools use, I think, to contract with some nurses. They give us, what we had last year was $43,870. I requested additional money to help them contract with some positions, and that right now they give me an additional $33,642. So I would ask that we accept that so we can pass it through to the school. I have initially put in like $216,000. So if I get a chance, I'll get some more, try to get it to you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Mr. Rouse? Pleasure of the board to add this to the consent agenda on September 5.
Yes.
Add it. Good, Lou? Everybody good? Madam Clerk, we'll add this to the September 5 work, or regular meeting. Thank you, or the consent agenda, rather.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, item five, discuss a request for approval of the updated library service policy. Ms. Angela McCully, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. So one of the goals of our consolidation was to provide a consistent library experience for all our library patrons, no matter what library that they visited in Harnett County. But prior to consolidation, our service policy did not incorporate all the branches because they were affiliate branches. So after consolidation, we, the leaders of our libraries, the branch managers and our department heads in the library, put our heads together and developed a policy that would include them, but would also update some of the language that was pretty antiquated and bring in some items specifically about patron privacy and technology that were not as relevant when the last policy was created. So together, we developed a library service policy that considers and includes, again, all the library branches, is relevant and aligned with our current emerging needs, addresses issues related to digital access, online resources and data privacy, aligns with best practices, fosters accountability by outlining responsibilities, procedures and guidelines for our staff, and promotes transparency by providing users with a clear understanding of what services are available, how they're provided and what is expected of them. So this final draft went to our library board of trustees and was approved on July 26, and now we're here to bring it to you for your approval. The red line version is pretty extensive. I'm not going to go into all the details. We did not make a lot of changes to the meaning of the policies. We mainly just reworded them. We reorganized them to make it easier for our patrons to read it, just made it flow better. Again, we updated the language in areas for clarity, understanding and consistency. We added policies, provide guidelines and rules for modern day services and resources and topics, and we also incorporated some of our procedural information, again, just for our patrons to have a better understanding. So I'm not going to go through every detail. We would be here for a very long time, and I want to be respectful of your time. So I'm just going to highlight some of the major changes, but I am fully prepared to discuss any area of this policy that you want to know more about. So one of the first changes that we made is we did update our goals and objectives to reflect our current strategic plan. We added those in, took the old ones out. I think it is worth mentioning that we are due a new master plan next year. We'll be starting on that pretty soon, and next year we'll come back with new goals to add to this policy. We did add borrowing policies to this, to this document, and that includes who can attain a library card, and we also included the loan periods for materials, renewals, fines and fees. Those were previously in our procedural manual, and we just thought it would be a better fit to have here as well. So it's kind of like a one-stop document for people who want to know more about our library rules. We also included library services that weren't in the previous policy, which included our reference services, things like printing, copying, outreach services, homebound. We added interlibrary loans, hours of operation and holiday hours, which some of those, again, were in our procedural manual. Probably one of the biggest parts of this document that was changed and reworded was the part on collection development. That's a pretty hot topic right now in public libraries, and so we wanted to make sure that we are prepared for anything that might come our way, for challenges, and just make sure that we have everything in place to, for the library's best interest and our community's best interest. So we kept but revised our service standards, our selection policies and our book censorship, we just changed the name of that, and our collection maintenance, and we added a support for intellectual freedom. We added more detail to the criteria. We added special considerations for items such as electronic information textbooks and self-published works, and we also added, or updated, the reconsideration of materials. And that's basically a challenge from the community to either remove or to add something to the collection that they feel is important. And then we added a scope of collection, which addresses why some libraries have more than others based on their size and capacity. On further down, and I'm skipping through, again, I'm happy to add any, to clarify anything else that you want to know about anything that I'm skipping as well. We added an internet use and library device policy in our previous policy. Times have changed quite a bit and technology's since then. We look back, we think it was probably 2014 before that was, since that was addressed. So we added policies for public computer access, wireless internet access, content filtering, patron responsibilities, parent and guardian responsibilities, privacy and limitation of liability, and we did work with the legal department on that to help us devise those, those policies. The next thing that we added, we actually removed most of the wording from our procedural manual and added information about our meeting space, because again, the previous policy was concerning our old meeting space at our old library, which was very limited, and again, it didn't include the meeting spaces in our other libraries. So we tried to like just expand that a little bit to include what we have now and what our branches have to offer. We pulled that from the procedures manual. Again, we updated it to address new library space as well as our branch libraries. And then we also added a change to privacy policy. We updated the information from North Carolina general statute to include the North Carolina general statute 125, article through three, charging public libraries in North Carolina to guarantee privacy of user records. We wanted to make sure we were in compliance with that, and it was spelled out here. Again, that's pretty extensive, but it does include, you know, what information the library collects, library materials and borrowing history. We don't, we don't save that. We, we can't guarantee the privacy of people using public computers and wireless networks. We can't guarantee their privacy of that. We did add a section on surveillance cameras because all our locations have surveillance cameras, and if there was ever a need to go back and review the footage, we want to know what the policy is on that. And then some more information regarding our library website, what we collect there, cookies and so forth. We did add a section on data and network security, children's privacy and third-party vendors. And that's the gist of the major changes to this policy. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or to delve deeper in anything that you'd like to discuss.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments for us? Totally. Pleasure of the board. Go ahead and add this request to the consent agenda next week as well, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Item six, discuss a ground lease with Harnett Air LLC for a hangar at Harnett Regional Jetport. Mr. Christopher Appel.
Good morning, Board. Before you today, discuss a proposed ground lease at Harnett Regional Jetport. This ground lease would be with Harnett Air LLC. It would be, they would be leasing approximately 32,060 square foot of land at the Harnett Regional Jetport, and this would be next to, as you come into the airport, it'd be very first building on the left with the other corporate box hangars. So there's a, one additional space to put a hangar right there, and that's where they would go. So on this 32,000 square foot of land, it's proposed to put a 75 by 120 corporate hangar there, and it will also include a parking area. Now, in order, because of the way airport road comes in, in that area, I'm not sure if you recall, but the board of adjustment granted a variance to be able to allow the, put this hangar there, will also require some fence removal and put it in a different area. It'll still be secure, but they're going to have to remove some fence to be able to fit this in, and then they'll have a new gate access to be able to get into the airport from that side of the airport for those folks. The term of this lease would be an initial term of 20 years with three five-year renewals, so the total will be 35 years, which again, is ideal for these size of corporate hangars according to the FAA guidelines. So it's, the term that we want, at the end of the lease, title to all the property will vet to the county at the end of the term. So again, that hangar will become the county's at the end of the 35 years. They don't have the option to take it off or remove it. So it will become the county's to continue leasing it to other individuals, or if the board at that time wanted to continue leasing it out. Rent is set at 28 cents per square foot. The total would be $8,976.80 per year, which as we are progressing, we are increasing the rent, so this rent will be higher than the other leases that we have because it's the newest hangar, it's going to be one of the larger hangars, so it's, we'll be getting more money out of this lease than any of our other leases, which is a positive. At the end of the initial term, the rent will escalate 25%, and then at the end of each renewal term, it'll be the lesser of 3% or the increase in CPI. And I think that's generally the terms of lease. Again, it's the lease that, that we developed over the last couple of years in conjunction with outside counsel, so it is the lease that we want, and therefore I would ask to, oh, and backing up a little bit, so the planning department's been going through their site plan review. As part of the final site plan review, they wanted to have a final ground lease set. So what I have written in here is I have a, it's not the final approved site plan, but is a, the proposed site plan that they don't believe will change any further. So as of right now, that will be the exhibit A attachment to show the exact area. Part of the terms of the lease, the way I wrote it, is this will act as a placeholder, and when that final approval is granted, that it will replace what I have as exhibit A with the new one. So the final plan will be included in this final lease. We felt like that was probably the best thing to do in order to get final approval to move forward in that way, so. But unless the board has any other questions regarding the lease, I would ask to move forward with approval of this ground lease.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Appel?
Just put it on the consent agenda for approval.
There's no objection. We'll go ahead and put this on the consent agenda for next week as well.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, discussing mid-Carolina local workforce development area chief elected official board agreement, Mr. Brent Trout.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Board. Today, we're looking at a new agreement related to our involvement in the Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Board. We have been as part of a three-county board for a little over a year now with it being Cumberland, Sampson and Harnett. We, through the state, they ended up requesting that we consider the addition of Moore and Montgomery County, and those counties are being added to this board. In that process, they made the decision to go back and look at the agreement that we had among the parties and do some revisions to that agreement. More or less is the same, but it cleans up the agreement and makes it better in a number of areas. So our membership, there'll be five elected board members, each board of commissioners electing a representative to this board, and then from there, the board will meet in order to make decisions and guidance related to workforce development issues. And so this is a new agreement, but only in the sense of doing some additional language Staff attorney, senior staff attorney Appel has reviewed it and actually asked for some additional items to be made, and they have included those. So, so we have, staff has reviewed it, and this is our recommended, we are recommending approval of this agreement.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Trout? Pleasure of the board to add this for approval.
Yeah.
Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda for next week as well, Madam Clerk. Thank you. You have applications to serve on boards and committees, commissioners in front of you. You have a packet and two applications, one to serve on the Harnett County District H Tourism Board and the other one for a board of adjustment. I'll allow you all to look through those for a moment.
Mr. Chairman, just for the board members' information, I'm familiar with Mr. Rullen. He's done a good job on the board of adjustments, so, or if I'm attorney, can stay on there.
Is there any objection to allowing Mr. Andrew Rullen in order to stay on the board of adjustment? We'll go ahead and add Mr. Andrew Rullen for approval for the board of adjustment and generally next week. And then we also have an application for Mr. John Privet. He would like to be considered for reappointment as well for the Harnett County District H Tourism Authority Board, and...
It's the position district, listed to the district, just anybody concerned on this board. I don't see there, I want my terms, he just, we want him to...
He's the business tourism related voting member.
He's wanting to stay on the board, right?
Yeah, he's a business tourism related voting member.
Okay. I have another question. This Harnett County Commission of Women and Youth.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the activity of this organization? I keep asking this. What are they doing?
What are they doing?
I mean, we get no report, nothing from this organization. And I don't think we should have a sitting organization, we don't never get a report about their activities.
Agree with that.
I mean, or so, what is it, just the name? Do we have active members on that board? Or what are they doing for the county? This is a county board.
You're talking the District H Tourism Board, correct? No, sir.
No, I'm talking about the Harnett County Commission of Women and Youth.
Which one?
Oh, oh, they haven't had, yeah, Chris can answer some of the questions as it relates to that organization at this point.
This is based on what I've heard in last, this is the most recent, but a few months ago, there has been some issues with maintaining membership on there. I think there's a number of seats open, and what I also heard is they can't even elect a chair on this, that they, they can't even make a decision on who to appoint as chair for this committee. So it's, it's been a bit of an issue, and I don't think that they have been meeting or been organized as far as I know.
Well, they should, I mean, I agree with the reorganizing, if that's what they need to do, but they need to have some presence in this county, and they need to be, have an agenda, because a sitting board without an agenda is not a board at all.
Right.
And the reason I'm speaking out, because I know about this board, and I haven't heard anything from them, any member of that board. I have said many times in the past, we should not have boards that's not reporting to this body at least once a year as to what their activities are.
Agree with that.
So I'm just saying, it's something we should consider.
Right.
And though we don't make a decision today, but it's something that we should consider.
They could report to us during a work session.
Yeah, I have during a work session.
They used to, in fact, they used to do that, I believe, didn't they?
I organized this committee here, this agenda. We had a full agenda for the county, and we reported to this board once a year. So all I'm asking is that, you know, they have something to bring to us to say, what, what are they doing? It's just a sitting board, and somebody should look into that. I'm just...
Mr. Trout, if you would go ahead and look into that, find out the members on that board as well as kind of what their, their status is, what they've been doing, and if they would hit on our calendar and give us an update, please.
Will do.
Ma'am, thank you. All right, as far as the Harnett County District H Tourism Authority Board, do I hear anything in regards to Mr. John Privet, the application that we have?
Let me say one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
If they need to reorganize, I understand that, and I just want you to move forward with that.
Does anybody know who Mr. John Privet is?
He's, he's the director out of Raven Rock, I believe. I don't have any objection to his continued service.
Objection. Go ahead and add Mr. Privet for approval for the consent agenda next week. All right, and there are also several other vacancies, if y'all would look through here, and if it pertains to your district, possibly knows somebody, or for one of these positions, please encourage them to put in an application. All right, moving on to county mayor's report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chair. Today, I wanted to cover a few items as it relates to our preparation for potential hurricane weather that might affect our area. Just let you know what our emergency management staff's been working on. The staff has identified a potential ride-out crew for Wednesday night to go out and check the area as the storm starts impacting our area. The 911 center will be staffing two additional personnel per shift to handle an increased volume of calls that may occur if needed. Post-storm shelters have been identified and coordinated with the school system. Right now, they're currently looking at the Over Hills location as the potential shelter if needed. Our Swift Water Team, excuse me, Swift Water Team will be on standby operations Wednesday night, and will be available for the state eventually if our area ends up being cleared. Sheriff's Office will have two high clearance vehicles available for any rescue operations. There's, Larry is scheduling a web-based meeting for all fire chiefs and town officials today at 1400 to provide an update and address any logistical needs they have, and they've prepped all the equipment for potential operations, and our staff's been briefed on potential operations and their duties. So they're ready, and will continue to do so, and they continue to monitor. The National Weather Service has been putting, having a daily update briefing on the weather at 11:30 each day, and so we'll continue to monitor the storm as it approaches our area. Right now, the biggest thing we're worried about is a potential of four inches or more of rain and winds anywhere from 30 to 40 miles per hour. So that's our concern. We know that with that kind of weather, we can have downed trees and trees on power lines and that type of thing, so that's our, our biggest thing that we're concerned about, and the potential also of our rivers rising to a level where they might flood areas. So that's where we're at.
Sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have emergency number or contact number for the citizens?
What we, what we recommend is if, if they have an issue, they need to call 911.
911.
Yep, call 911. That's the easiest way to get help quickly, and there'll be staff there that'll be able to help coordinate the appropriate response to whatever their needs are. So rather than trying to find a seven-digit number, we just ask them, if they have an emergency situation, to call 911, and they'll, they'll handle the call and address it appropriately.
Moving on, we have a motion for closed session.
Move to go into closed session to protect attorney-client privilege and discuss personnel matter.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board go into closed session for the following purposes. One, to discuss certain personnel matters, and two, consultation with and instructions to the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating a proposed contract for the acquisition of real property. This motion's made pursuant to NC General Statute Section 143-38 dot 11A, six and five. That's the motion.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any suggestions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll now move into closed session. We'll now move into closed session.
All right, after a motion and closed session, we reconvene in an open session. I will now call the meeting back to order. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion?
I have a motion and a second in order to adjourn. We are adjourned.